Is it a workshop, right, workshop order? First item on the agenda, we'd the pleasure, the legion. You have it there.
I'm standing.
Let's take a little bit into the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Short agenda.
There we go. So how do we want to start this as we did the, do you want to go over?
Yeah.
Get feedback from us?
Yep, so as a result of the strategic planning session that we had with Lorna Kibbe Solutions, the attached document, when Laura scrolls down, is the output of that strategic planning session. What we've done since then, as you recall, we had the different core areas and then we had the breakdowns of each core area. And then we have different goals within each, so we received a rough draft version from Lorna Kibbe. And then what we did was circulate it with staff to provide input and add additional items. Now you'll notice, we did put some responsibility items, but you won't see many target dates because ultimately, we're looking for your feedback on what your priorities are, hoping that they're not all top priority, so.
Are not all what?
Are all not top priorities, so we need them all done at the same time. So ultimately, we can go through category by category if you'd like. And if you'd like to provide some feedback or guidance on your priority, maybe by section, that can help us better gauge what you'd like us to work on first.
You're going to do a priority like one to 10?
Well, so how they're numbered here, we'll reprioritize them.
The actual determination priority can only happen at the review meeting.
Yeah, correct.
So you can then carry it over to today's board meeting if you want to. Thank you, because it's a workshop.
Yeah, that first group, they're under services and programs. It seemed, you know, programming, water yoga, acrobatics, programs for youth and teens and all that sort of stuff. Does the GSCDD have a history of programming, anything like that? I mean, it seems more like a park district function as opposed to a utility function. But I guess we, you don't have park districts down here.
No, ma'am.
No, so have you guys ventured into this area before and how did it turn out? Or has it never been done? And this would be starting brand new.
When we did a survey, we didn't get anything that really got a huge deal that was overwhelming, do this, do that.
Okay.
Nothing got to that level. So it seems to me that one and two are so far, those are down at the 2,000-foot level. I think we start at the 30,000-foot level and find out what we're doing first before we start getting in to the details of a program specifically for seniors. That's really getting into the details.
And there's a lot of expenses along with that.
That's right, some of those things require a capital investment. So to me, it seems like that number five has to be first.
Well, it also requires people investment and all that sort of stuff. I just didn't know if this is an area you had already tried at one point and, you know, had some feedback from, or this would be a brand-new area of programming.
These, so the majority of the items that are on here are either existing CIP projects that are already on your list or functions that are already within, that we're doing. So like, we do have a water aerobics class.
Oh, you do?
At the pool, it's free of charge, no cost to the district. The yogins or the instructor doesn't charge, at least to my knowledge.
No.
So some of these programs are kind of already in place. Do we want to finesse them or continue them or enhance them or reduce them or solidify them with a partnership type of agreement, so.
Okay.
And you guys.
So we are doing something.
Yes, ma'am.
In this area.
Yes.
So this would be fine-tuning it.
Yes.
Got it, okay.
I know at one point, we did have the swimming classes at the pool, but then, I think it was prior to you, and then it was terminated because I guess the gentleman was charging residents. He was a resident, he was charging residents, but then nothing to the district.
Oh.
So we said the same thing, if you want to do it, I don't charge, and yes, but you should not charge and, you know. And I think we did have interest on somebody this year.
We did, but the split was the issue.
It was insurance, right? I think the two million.
Part of it insurance, part of it was the 70-30 split that was proposed.
Well, if we had created the established park and recreation programs, then one, two, and three, four would certainly be a part of that.
They'll go under.
That deal would go under that and maybe many other things, but.
Okay, I didn't understand that we wouldn't, we aren't starting from scratch here. We aren't starting brand new, that we're already doing some.
We, to my knowledge, I've never seen anything done. The closest we got to it is we created and authorized the preparation of a park master plan. We then had public meetings, we had, what's the word, the survey. And because the survey didn't point out anything specific, you know, a mandate, it's just everything kind of fell apart.
So maybe, maybe we can have number five come to the front, be that the first initiative. Then the second will be a survey, go out, not for facility, but for actually activities, just wording that, like what kind of activities and programs you like to see.
In other words, do five, create a program, it might be a first draft. Get that out on the street, see what that leads to, to then go to the second step. That's what I agree.
And I think the others will then fall in line behind that.
So one of the things that the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee is working on is identifying what special event programs that will be district-sponsored and then making that list, approving it, bringing it to you all for hopefully your adoption. Because there's been a lot of smaller interests such as the music as a, music in the park has been the event this Saturday. That was a small pilot that we're testing, but is that something that we want to continue to have district-sponsored? Or does, do we want that to be community-sponsored? Same thing with, there's been talks of a drum circle. Is that a district-sponsored event or is that a community, you know?
What is it?
A drum circle.
What is that?
Just that one, is that?
I've never heard of that.
Your former circle.
Drum and a circle, that's it.
You beat your drums, yep. Okay, so.
I'm not going there.
Well, put. To me, that would be a resident, that would be, yeah.
Anything I would say is going to be probably prioritized.
So actually, to give an idea, I just kind of opened the agenda for Parks and Recs, so they know what, because I think their Parks and Recs envision with staff is pretty aligned when it comes to what was on the agenda. So they would have the music at the park, I guess that's the one that's a question mark. Is it going to be a district or is it going to be a resident, you know, initiative? The fishing tournament, which the activity that we have been doing for 10 years. Winter Fest, you know, the holiday event, we've been doing that for that long as well. I think what will be new, I think we did it a few times, the egg hunt. And I believe it was a partnership with Gateway Elementary, but I could be wrong, or they did it over here on our side, so that'll be another one, that'll be, you know, district. Memorial Day Tribute Garden, Flag Garden. Independence Day Celebration, Labor Day, and then Halloween Haunted Portraits. So those are what they're thinking about.
So we'll change and make established Parks and Recreation Program number one. And then subsequent to that, kind of a dropdown, we'll have like a survey.
And then from there, start developing programs for seniors or whatever, you know.
Okay, all right.
I agree.
Anything else for the services and programs? Is there anything you'd like to add to it that you can think of?
I guess that number six is under the quality of life overall thought. It's not, certainly not a park and rec type item, it's just quality of life.
Yeah, program, a community program that we'd be able to partner with some of those other outside agencies to have here.
Are you looking for a target date or you want to go through the whole thing and then give target date?
We'll go through the whole thing and target dates. All right, is there anything else for 1A? All right, do we want to move to B?
Under 1B, I think the important thing is to move the dog park to the fun park and then see how that goes and what requirements we need there first. And then do the other things that are listed there. I mean, I don't know if you'd need an agility course, I don't know.
Yeah, that would go after.
If you've got enough room for an agility park, once you move the dog parks there. I, of those, I think number nine is the most.
I agree.
Pressing, and then let the others fall in after you do number nine.
Okay. So additionally, one of the things that is under PrAC's review is rules and regulations. We kind of have a hodgepodge of rules and regulations for the different facilities. And so we want to try to get one comprehensive document that identifies all of the Parks and Rec assets and what those rules and regs are for each.
So seven, you were talking about predominantly rules and regulations?
Yes. Anything else for Parks and Recreation for quality of life?
And I'm assuming that under 11, master plan, phase one implementation would be the survey.
What we, you know, the.
Okay, what we did the other day.
Four or five little items that we did before, yeah.
Carry your microphone, they're not changed any, so please speak loudly. They're working internally, they're not broadcasting to upload or something. So use the microphones here too, because that's its recording in the room, and then that should pick up online.
So go ahead to the soccer complex.
Okay, of those, I think 13 is the most important one. And lights and all that sort of stuff can follow afterwards.
Which one?
The parking, number 13, add additional parking, I believe is the most important of those five. And then the others can come after we get some more parking. Because it seems to be that that is the thorn in the butt for the soccer complex.
Where would an automatic gate be located?
Up here, in the front. That way you would.
You mean next to that parking area?
On Soccer Drive, the automatic gate.
On the drive?
On the drive. Because then you would only have, most, most parks throughout the county have, like, they have the main entrance gate. And that closes sunup or opens, you know, sunup, closes at sundown. Right now, we've, we would have multiple gates that we would have to close, but then there would still be.
How do you open them? Do you have to have a pass?
For.
Or they're just opened or they're closed?
Opened or closed during the day, yeah.
And when you mean upgrade the lights, you mean the lights on the soccer field?
I believe all.
Or just lighting?
Lighting in general, parking lot lighting.
So be when we're doing the additional parking, then.
Yeah, do that at that time.
At the same time, yeah.
What is sign standardization?
We've got a hodgepodge of signs throughout the campus, throughout the complex. And so that kind of falls into the rules and reg policy of adopting the rules and regs for the different parks and rec amenities and then have uniformity signage throughout.
So it's not necessarily informational signs of going something to the right, something to the left or whatever? Or it is, does include those?
All of the above. If you walk over there right now, there's about seven signs and one's a lightning sign, one's a rule sign, one's a surveillance sign, one's, I mean, there's just, there's a lot.
And we're trying to standardize both the posts and the signs, standardize everything?
Yes.
We kind of have that in Pelican.
Okay.
We've tried to do it in Pelican.
Anything else for the soccer complex?
And extended field fences, just clarify that.
One of the things we've been discussing internally is we, there's no, when you shut down the parking access to the, over here, you're also in essence shutting down access to the playground. And so if we try to shut down the actual soccer fields, we can't shut them down because we would have to shut the parking lot, which then would shut access to the playground. So if we extended this fence line over in front of the concession stand, we would be able to lock just the soccer fields down.
But if you lock the soccer fields down, they have that gate by the bocce, so they can still go to the playground.
Yeah. But if you shut down, right now, if we say the soccer fields are closed.
I get it, because the parking lot, they have to park to go through the gate by the bocce, okay.
Yeah.
I get it.
We have to shut everything down.
I get it, yeah.
Anything else for the Sherman Soccer Complex that you guys can think about? So let me just preface that this is a living, breathing document. We're going to be reviewing this, I think we said quarterly at your board meetings. And moving, editing, reprioritizing, adding, subtracting, that's our goal.
So you've got the lights, which would be a capital item. What about the grass in the surface?
That's a good point. Is that a quality of life that we want to add under for Sherman Soccer Complex? We can add it.
I just think it ought to be identified since it's an item that has to be addressed.
Okay.
And that, that deal doesn't last forever.
We can add the soccer field sod as an item. Anything else? Want to go to the pool?
I think number 17.
It's not applicable in that category, is. This is, this is pool, but what's playground, pickleball, and outdoor fitness got to do with the pool?
We need to change the title of it and just put Commons.
Commons Park.
Commons Park.
Yeah, okay.
There we go. See, look, it's a living, breathing document, you guys are editing it away.
It begins with a P.
So I, and I think we're already started down that path of pickleball, playground. I don't, I think we kind of pushed off outdoor fitness a little bit, but it'll, you know, it can be revisited.
Okay, so number 20, consider the migration of the dog park to the fun park and the fun park to the commons, is that what you meant?
Yes. Fun park amenities that are like the volleyball, the basketball, and then that eventually will be phased in at the commons. Which we can add amenities, add that word. So let me just clarify with the add new six-foot to eight-foot fencing. The existing pool is grandfathered in. There are height restrictions from Department of Health for having a pool. Your fencing typically is required to have at least six foot. We're grandfathered for now, but we will need to be with the renovations of phase one.
What is ours, four foot?
Yes, yeah. So that'll need to be, that's why that's on this list. So we'll be required to do that eventually. And most likely part, probably part of the park plan. Anything else for the Commons Park? Quality of life items, okay. Linear Park? So this list went out prior to getting some information from FPL. There's a lot of restrictions from FPL for what can and cannot be put in that, what we call the linear park. So 24 is off the table.
What are you building that's over 15 feet tall that has impact that?
They have a policy that, and it's all, it's attached to the PrAC's agenda, but FPL has a policy that basically, they don't want you to attract people to the, underneath the power lines.
I think they also don't want anything that can go more than 14 feet above grade.
Yeah, I heard 14 or 15.
So I think that's one of the issues, also top of the other.
But I thought that was like a structure, not a ball or a frisbee.
No, they're talking about like equipment, they're talking about light poles, anything, they.
But if you're interested in reading that, it's attached to the PrAC agenda, the policy that they sent me.
So is the linear park even, I mean, should we even consider that a park?
What's, you know, RDR.
I mean, it sounds like the only thing you can do is.
Walk, jog.
It's acreage that is dedicated to us for a park, but it's limited use.
You can walk, and one thing I haven't done since I saw the item from the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee is go back and watch at the initial, first of all, there's like three or four easements, right-of-way agreements from way back when. And then there were some additional consents of use to build the lakes that are there, the lakes and ponds, for example. And then right now, you know, we worked on one for the, for the transmission lines to go up. And we've talked about the irrigation system in the future. But I'll relook at those to see if there are any flexibility for recreational, but yeah, I saw their policies that they have.
So Carol, to your point, I think it, I think we should still include it because there are some, there's already pathways out there. Who's to say we couldn't paint lines and say, you're at mile one, you're at mile two, you know?
How long is it?
It's long, I mean, it's been, it gets a lot of.
Yeah, and whether you have some of those workout, some places will have, they'll have benches and other places.
They won't allow us to have.
I'll go back and look.
Okay.
Okay.
Tony's going to work his magic.
Bag hunt can go there, start here.
Good idea.
Going along this route, the only thing it's going to be is going to be just a trail?
A walking path.
A trail?
Yeah.
A walking path?
A few benches, and we already have the pet.
Yeah, and some signs that, that just keep track.
Yeah, the signage and the pet stations, they're already there.
Yeah, pet stations.
They're already there, yeah, so it's good. Okay, so we just remove 24 and then Tony will look into it if there's anything else.
And then, of course, 23, the plan to tie into the commons.
I mean, if, if that's all that it can be, I mean, doesn't it make sense to kind of move that forward? I mean, it seems simple to do, number one. Number two, you add a few amenities that aren't going to cost a whole lot. And you can start having people walk there.
Well, the one thing you want to do is.
What about parking?
You got, you got to get, well, there is no parking.
They have to park here just across the street.
But that's why if you would park at the Commons Park, it would be critical to create the plan to tie it into, and then you're going to have to do some paving. So there's, there's quite a bit of paving that's got to do to finalize it, especially on the north end. I think when you go past the north end, it's pavement almost all the rest of the way down.
Okay.
But there's definitely no parking.
Right now, Carol, the parking, you would have to park here and then walk across Griffin, and then you could walk up. We did get some pricing on a small pedestrian access, and we're working on getting like some, I don't know if you've seen the John Yar, I'm going to.
Yarborough Trail.
Yarborough Park. They have like a very small, like pedestrian little arch.
Right.
That just identifies it as that park.
Yeah, John rides a bike on it all the time. But it's only about seven miles, seven and a half miles, something like that. And of course, seven and a half back, so about 15 miles.
Yeah, this one here is what, 5,000, 6,000 feet, that's about it? It's not very long.
So maybe a mile?
Maybe a mile.
Yeah.
Okay. So that, you can't really do a bike thing on it, so it's just going to have to be a walking path? Okay.
Well, if it had that connection to the Commons Park paved to come over there, that would possibly make it be more used for a biking trail.
And I think that's the intent of the park plan.
Because you could have two components of it. You could have the south component, which would be a little bit longer and go into the park and back down. Or you go to the north component, all the way up to Gateway Boulevard and come back down.
Yeah.
Have you seen this addition? I don't know if staff did or not, so here's the FPL. And before it would go all the way to Hampton, right? They turned it right here, they already made a road.
I thought it was just gravel and.
Well, it is, well, yes.
Yeah, but that would be the, that would be the route.
I wasn't sure if you knew that this was here.
You what now?
I wasn't sure if you knew that they.
Yeah, yeah, I knew that was there, I just didn't think it was paved.
Yeah, no, it's not, it's only paved up to here.
So what we would need to do is to extend that in and tie it into wherever we would best want it to enter into the Commons Park master plan. So it doesn't end up coming into a deal that's going to be right in the middle of where we might have a fence or something, yeah.
I was prepared not to. It is Doug's.
Well, looking at this map, if this is, it's hard to see where it's at, but this looks like it, this is it.
Yeah, right here.
So if that's the case, it's coming into the far end of the, or the south end of the park, so it, I don't know that it would have, there's an arrow there that shows where they're, it looks like a path going out in this.
That's the plan.
But the real plan is, the current plan has it down here, so six and one-half does the others. Doesn't take anything to make that change and move it up further north, if that's where we want it.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, so I'll just add finished paving from, finished paving of the linear park and then.
Well, and I think Doug was talking about making sure that in the master plan for the commons area that there were walking trails in the commons area also.
Yes.
So we just want to make sure that everything gets signed together.
That raises a good question. Is this walking and no bikes or a combo? Because if you go combo, typically, the county is taking the position, a combo has to be eight feet wide.
And I think the majority of those pathways that are currently paved are probably near, near that width.
Yeah, but I mean, I don't know that that path that's in the current deal has that width. I don't know if it's that wide, but that's something to think about.
I have a question, so.
I think if it's two miles or less, people aren't really going to ride their bikes there. I mean, bike riders got, like to go further than that.
There's quite a few people who ride their bikes that I see, there's a gentleman or somebody on a trike.
Yeah, so.
Well, just needs to be planned.
What are the restrictions for us to continue? So we would add, we would connect it to the commons area. But then at the other end, when it gets near to Stony Brook, that is also not paved. Are we going to, are we going to pave from here to the road? Can we even do that?
Yeah, I think we could do that. I don't see that that's an issue because it would benefit them for access to their facilities. Keep in mind, that, that path that's over there that's paved is used by their vehicles.
It's, yeah.
So this would be beneficial to them and.
And the county wouldn't, wouldn't look at this as an entrance in it, because now the gates won't be there anymore. You know, like how we have the armed gates here, they'll be gone because we just have a small pedestrian entrance.
No, they, I think they have to keep the vehicle access gates, FPL requires. I think that it's for their reason.
Yeah, I think the fact that that, we're not, we're not creating a new access, the access is there. The only difference is it's paved versus, it's unpaved versus.
So then add those, so it's two areas of paving we need to be done, okay.
So I just added finished paving.
Because that really takes away from that north end of not having that access that allows you to make a smaller loop.
Okay. Anything else for the linear park?
And when you do make that, Carol, to your point, is that when you make that, make it continuous, now all of a sudden, you made that thing almost two and a half, three miles long. Now all of a sudden, it gets to be a little bit maybe more attractive to the, to the bikes. The question then is, do you like the electric bikes to get out there, go 20 mile an hour?
I think it's, there's a thing that says no motorized vehicles, period. So the electric bike, well, those will be considered the motorized vehicles.
So if you have one, you could ride it, but you can't motorize it, okay.
And you also have to make it handicap, handicapped accessible?
Yeah.
And have parking for people with handicapped needs so that they can get out and.
Then that means that.
Take a walker or, you know, a wheelchair.
Connection to the Commons Park is now even more critical.
Right.
To get that thing so that it ends up in a position that you can get to handicap parking.
Yep.
And right now, our handicap parking is nowhere near there.
Right.
So we might want to try to figure out how we do that.
And the other thing is, are you going to let golf carts on there?
It's not allowed.
No.
That's the other restriction.
While we were doing.
Nothing with a motor goes under there, so.
While we were doing the sewer mapping, I used that with my golf cart. A lot of times, people get from A to B. But if you make it truly a park, that becomes almost prohibited.
You guys want to move on to core area number two?
Yep.
Community improvements and maintenance.
I think number three is the important one there. Just like, how did Bob describe it the other day? Irrigation in Pelican Preserve.
Hole of spaghetti.
Hole of spaghetti. I got a funny feeling that irrigation in Gateway is the same way, a hole of spaghetti.
With different sized needles.
And.
Hotel.
Hours, hours.
Yeah.
Elbow macaroni.
I'll tell you one thing though.
And handmade ones too.
To figure out where everything is and get a master. To figure out where everything is and get a master plan, I think is the first thing you gotta do.
Our irrigation controller project took our bowl of spaghetti and really put it in great shape. Because we connected everything, when we turned on the water, we found out what we had missed. And we had to run some lines over to connect it. Now, the only thing that we have that's loose, and it probably will remain that way, are the nodes that are at the end of cul-de-sacs where we didn't wanna run half a mile of pipe for a.
Two nodes.
Fifty, fifty foot diameter cul-de-sac for water. So, but it, it did take our loose ends, as you described it, and tied them all together. Now, we've got the problem of going back and getting our GIS mapping that was all set together, and we had all, everybody knew where everything was, it's now all been discombobled. Because we took some of the things that were in one zone, put it into a different zone. So we gotta have our GSI guy, GIS guy come in and redo the mapping.
Part of what we're trying to accomplish, I think, is, has to do with getting our records digitized, so we can see what we have. We don't even know what we have up in the rooms. So hopefully, that'll fit parts and parts. The second part of it is, I'm speaking now for Pelican, it's probably the same over here, but there's lots of problems with the aging of the.
Oh, yeah.
Irrigation system.
Oh, we found that.
Sooner or later, we're gonna have to bite the bullet of probably putting in more of a state of the art.
New piping.
Yeah, yeah, just new piping, new control, new everything, so.
How about commercial? Ours is all residential.
We, we have commercial too.
Yeah, ours is all, like literally the one that you have in a single family home, that's what we have out there.
Basically.
Yeah.
Basically.
So I do have a question regarding number two, so add irrigation to Griffin and in the conflict with the road widening project. Even if we do the road project, we still need irrigation, because you still have, you know. So you still need it, but maybe not as all the way out.
The only thing is, if you're gonna do that, somebody needs to take some time and develop what the road plan's gonna look like, so that you don't spend a lot of money on putting pipe in the ground only to tear it out when you do the road.
That's why we have de-conflict with the road widening.
Keep in mind.
If it ever happened.
County, first thing they'll do unless we get that paragraph sixteen changed, is they'll make it rip it all out.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, that's why that's there. Um, and, and we've done that same thing with the forestment and irrigation main project. Um, for the road crossing of Griffin, we've made sure to encase beyond the existing road as it sits today, that way we're covered for the future. So number one and two kind of, kind of go hand in hand. I mean, I'm sorry, the new number one, the master irrigation plan and, and two.
I mean, the refreshed entrance monuments, I kinda saw that, it looked really nice.
I meant to, I meant to send you all a note, um, the soccer, the Sherman Soccer Drive monument, you'll notice that it's been painted. Um, and there's two different colors, I'd love your feedback on which color is your preference. We painted the green, black, and then there are two different shades of grayish tan. So, if you could just send me individual, individually your feedback, I'd appreciate that. Cause that is the color, you know, collectively, we've taken an internal poll too, to get the pulse of what the color that they like, that staff like.
Would the Griffin be black as well, or would that remain, because there, there's none, but then in the other areas, we do have it. We haven't thought that far out.
Haven't thought that far out.
We don't.
Probably green.
We don't have.
Once you add green, black, and any of those two color, it's kinda a lot, but I wouldn't mind.
Keep it simple and just do two, if you guys wanted to keep it as black.
We don't have any walls, do we? No walls.
What do you mean?
Do we have, the CDD have a wall?
No.
No, just monuments.
Just monuments, okay. Cause we're in the process of going through a color selection for our walls that we're painting next year. We got seven thousand feet of walls, plus twenty-nine monuments. And we gave people a Sherwin-Williams book like this, biggest mistake ever made.
Yes.
We should have condensed that down to five basic colors.
Ed, why you think there's only two colors painted on that monument?
Pelican went with four options presented there.
So let me just preface the colors that are out there, we did reach out to Sherwin-Williams, and we reached out to Florida Paints, and both separate, you know, we didn't say, hey, we're doing this, they both provided pretty much the same colors, so.
Did they have a grayish color?
It's, yeah.
That's what we're looking at, a grayish color. Cause this water is taking the, the colors that we've got, especially the, uh, what do you call that?
The irrigation water. The irrigation water.
Irrigation water, yeah. We can't afford to put other water on. Irrigation water makes the lighter colors, especially the yellows and the light tans.
Orange.
It makes a, that's exactly right, it's orange.
Orange or red color.
Ideally, whatever color that collectively, um, would be what we'd move forward, the monuments, to get away from the, the yellowish color.
Well, then we asked Sherwin-Williams, was there a product that they know of that we could put on it as an overcoat? And they said, none they do have.
We asked the same question.
To wash down.
What they told us is to buy an expensive filter to put it in the main, cause we're main irrigation, put it over there, and when we look at the price, and we said, uh, yeah, huh, we're fine.
We'll wash it.
The, the, it's just fine now.
We'll live with it.
Yeah, exactly.
I agree.
Well, actually, uh, in Pelican, uh, some of our associations, because they have that same problem on theirs, have gone to, instead of, uh, the irrigation.
Sprayers.
Sprayers, they've gone to trickle, trickle things, so that it doesn't.
Oh, you mean the tubing?
Drip line.
Yes, drip.
Drip irrigation.
Drip irrigation.
Lot better grass you can't do that with.
Rather than.
Mark, Mark is looking to standardize that right now.
I thought Pelican got your, where, where do you get your irrigation water? Out of the lakes?
Free.
Out of the lakes, yeah, okay.
Uh, the other variable that just came to surface this week, uh, when I was out with, uh, Sevillah, trying to get him to sign off on the easement, is that apparently.
Sienna.
No, Sevillah, Sevillah was the condo. They paint their monument colors different than anybody else in Pelican to match their homes.
We've got that.
Well, I never heard of that before.
A condo association.
Cause I know that Mark is looking at, from the landscape point of view, standardizing it, which I thought was appropriate, but this just adds something else to it.
Yeah, we've got.
That may not be what the people want, so.
So, so with, just so you guys know, with, um, this landscape, Pelican is working on drafting a, a landscape policy as well. Uh, we're working through the bowl of spaghetti over in Pelican of irrigation. Um, they're working on the entrance monuments through the subcommittees, so all of these items are consistent over there as well.
Well, one, one of the things you got on that landscape is, is that you better develop your landscape plan or policy before you develop your irrigation, because if you go in there and you're going to have sod or grass in an area, I guarantee you the irrigation you're gonna have to have is different than it would be if it was planting.
The landscape policy, at least what I envisioned, would be, um, working with like Ronnie and staff on developing, hey, you've got this aged oak tree. It needs to be maintained, it needs to.
Is that a master overall?
It's not, it's not like to tear up and redo, it's a, hey, okay, if, if you have to replace, do you do in kind? Or here's six options.
What sod stays sod, what is planting stays planting.
Can we just remove the word master, so it's just develop a landscaping policy?
Yeah.
Cause I was thinking in line with Ed, like, this is gonna be the whole thing, but if it's not, it's easier.
Well, we don't, the CDD.
One of the issues that came up at the landscape subcommittee, however, is that if you do that and say it has to be replaced kind for kind, you can't always do that with certain palms, certain palms get diseases, uh, certain trees.
Well, yeah, they get diseases, you can't put it in back.
And you can't put it back in. So like, there's, um, the one palm thing, you can't put a different palm. If you have to take a palm out, you can't put a, a palm in, you've gotta put a, another kind of tree or something.
Yeah, like Ganoderma.
Ganoderma is the one you can't.
You're done, you gotta go to a different kind of thing.
So, I mean, you could put tree there. But don't, don't put, you know, palm tree or this.
The, the big thing is, is that the irrigation needs.
Right.
Is dependent upon the, what, what the, uh, the product.
Yes.
The area, do we have any CDD common area maintenance responsibilities, landscape responsibilities that are inside any of our entities, communities?
Pelican, and.
Well, Pelican and Stony Brook, we know, but outside those two, do we have any?
Not to my knowledge.
So we don't go inside any gates or in anything like that?
Not to my knowledge.
So it's pretty much the two road corridors.
Yes. And soccer drive.
And, and, yeah, okay, okay, well, that makes it a little bit easier. The only trouble is it's, it's so much scatter, more scattered.
Well, and, and later on, at the three o'clock meeting, we have a slew of straggler parcels under consideration. Eagle Point, I believe, is one of the roads.
Yeah.
Um, or with.
Next to the Girl Scouts.
Girl Scout, Girl Scout, Girl Scout, thank you, I always mix those two up. Um, under your, so if the board so chose to take on that road, of course, we'd have the landscape responsibility with that.
But that'd be from Gateway Boulevard, basically back to that building that we almost bought.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just we're on this topic, irrigation, have we ever received from Mainscape updated?
I asked again for it yesterday.
Have what?
Okay, the irrigation, we have the book, a map.
Yeah.
But it's, the one that we have is not up, it's not updated. They have one that's updated on the field, and I think we asked them in February.
I asked them for that, your name.
From, from Mainscape?
Yes.
Yes.
We have a quarterly meeting.
I asked them before she started here.
When we did ours four years ago and did the GIS, if we hadn't have had Mainscape and had made a change, it would have been impossible. Cause nobody knew where the stuff's at, nobody.
They have a book that we gave them of where we thought the stuff was, and they have, there's all marked up where it actually is.
Well, he, what, what we did, the first time four years ago, and what we're gonna do now, is we're turning on the new controllers, like one's got thirty zones. Zone one, and the guy with the GIS backpack, he goes to every one of the heads, he goes to every one of the valves. Zone two, same thing, and basically reestablish the GIS mapping.
So Chelsea, I know you asked him, but I know they have, because he, I remember then when we had, I don't know, the last meeting, he says he wanted to upgrade it, enter in the system and give us a clean version. I just want him to bring the book here, we'll put it in the copy machine and we'll copy it, I'm not out.
Who's, who's got it?
Mainscape.
Who, Freddie's gone.
No, not Freddie, it's irrigation.
Juan?
No, it's where the field guy had the last time.
Actually, I remember Laura, cause I met the field guy, and it's Laura.
I was pulled over on the Santa Road.
Laura and I pulled over and we went to talk to him, because.
Is it the new guy?
No, he's actually gone, this gentleman's.
Yeah.
I, I will work on that.
Okay, thank you.
Cause they had a guy that was with us for two weeks, and he's gone already. And we've got another new guy in, but he's been at a lower level, and he's now working with us, and I was wondering who's doing yours, cause you guys were dealing with Freddie and Juan.
The beard, that's all I know.
I know, I, yeah, I know.
Jason, something, yeah.
But to me, is if they're doing the irrigation white checks, and they're using those maps, so technically, it would only take them a month to even give them us a better version, because they're there on the spot.
Well, the thing you guys got is that whoever's doing this master plan controller, they may totally change what zones you have and, and consolidate them to where.
Yeah.
One zone handles the south end, one handles the north end, one handles Griffin Drive. That's probably what they're gonna do.
Oh, but we need to start in.
But you need to know where all your piping is at.
Yep.
To, to be able to know how you tie this stuff into the new controllers.
The controllers are looking at, I think they told me they'll handle two hundred.
Or not.
But originally, but, yeah.
Well, your big thing is, is all the underground boring you have to do to get the lines to each one of those controllers, that's, we had almost six thousand feet of controller wire put in.
Yeah, I believe that.
So it's, it was a job and a half.
Want to move it to water?
Yep.
I thought that number eight was already kind of in the works.
It is, but we wanna memorialize that as part of this planning.
Okay, and if my memory serves correctly, we've only authorized two or one, one pilot program.
Yes.
Under this, and I thought we were wanting to do three or four.
No, there were three, there's one pilot program, but three component parts.
Oh, okay.
We're hoping to bring on three vendors as part of the pilot program.
Got it.
To test three different meters. Okay.
Okay.
What's the inventory list?
Put together a comprehensive inventory list, I believe you guys spoke of nauseam, um, at the strategic planning session to make sure that we have an inventory list. We have an inventory.
So you're just on inventory list of our water utility components, everything.
Which we, we have one, that's anything of value, any single item of value twenty-five hundred dollars or more, but.
You want everything?
Everything.
So this could be in the ground or in the garage?
Yeah.
Okay, good point.
Sewer?
Sewer cleaning is, 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 I don't know the last time a sewer in Gateway was cleaned. I think Christ was a child.
Well, there's been.
I've never seen a sewer cleaned that wasn't cleaned because of a break or something. That's it, otherwise, we don't do really what we should be doing.
Staff is putting together, so, just so you, you know, the capital reserve study that Raftelis did for us on the utility side, there were a handful of recommendations that they suggested that we implement, and we do. So Austin has been working diligently with Raftelis on, uh, putting together an RFP for the sewer cleaning and jetting, and, and phasing that over years, because it's going to cost an exorbitant amount of money.
TVing.
TV, the whole.
Gotta have that sewer cleaning, jetting, and TVing, we gotta have that.
And, and so they're putting together a list, the expectation of how the vendor would turn over. So, um, all of the recommendations of that report, we are working on implementing, and, and that's why it's listed above, implement underwater, and it really goes across all of the utility, is implement recommendations from the capital reserve study.
The inventory be the same thing as the water?
Yeah.
When, when you're doing that, I don't know if you have interconnect pipes that don't serve a purpose other than balancing two ponds.
We do.
That's stormwater though, not sanitary sewer.
I only talk to stormwater.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but we had those in Pelican, and when we piped everything in video, we did not do those, cause I guess we didn't recognize they were there.
We do have it.
We did it from all the.
Talking about the connecting section?
I know we do have it, cause Silver Lakes and, uh, the one by Cypress, there's one there, they, all they do is just balance each other.
Well, we have them all over our place, and we didn't realize it.
Well, our system's a lot more, more linear.
Yes.
Yeah.
But the other part about it is, I don't know if you really need to put a viewer in every pipe. We did it, I think we kind of wasted some money.
Cleaning, and then tried to determine that it was to be cleaned if it was greater than twenty-five percent blockage.
Yeah, well, we.
That's what we did on storm.
Once we found they were clean, then our focus has been on the catch spaces and the mitridend sections.
Okay.
And they are expected yearly, because you, a variety of depths, uh, some of her six inches, some are three feet.
What about your street inlets?
That's what I'm talking about, there's those little catch bases, so. If you go into one that's three feet deep and you're only at, uh, fifteen percent blockage, well, clearly, the pipe which is above that, it's gotta be clean. So we've really streamlined the process, before we were paying, paying eighty thousand dollars a year. And PONZ is in the process right now of dramatically reducing that and increasing the amount of areas that we're catching each year. Instead of doing it every three years, we can probably do it every other year.
Well, with that one company that, uh, we had six, what was that, Tony, seven, eight years ago, when I was doing all that mapping of the storm sewers, we pretty well, with their mapping, uh, did most of the sewers in Gateway, in Gateway, and found a lot of pipes that would be showing as a fifteen, and all of a sudden, you find it's a twenty-four.
Oh, yeah, we found a lot of that too.
I think we've got all that corrected. What we didn't have at that time is we didn't do anything immediately on the actual cleaning. But since then, we've gone in, and I think while we got base and five done, and we're basically, basically done, getting close to being done with four, and then we're gonna be putting out bids for three soon.
I think it was Morris Riley that did a lot of it.
Morris Riley.
Yeah, and they did it for us.
We have ten more.
Yeah, Morris Riley did all of it, Pelican Reserve, because they guarded us, that's what we used for the claim against. But the good news of the process, and I guess what I was trying to convey is, we didn't need to spend the, the amount of money we were spending, historically have spent. We have determined, if we keep the catch basin clean, the pipes are no break.
See, our problem was, is that our system was twenty-five years old already when we started, that's the killer.
So we may need to do it once, get a baseline.
And most of ours was sand washing in off the roads and getting into the sewer, and never been, never been cleaned like over on Gateway Greeds along the golf course. and never, never been cleaned, like over on Gateway Greeds along the golf course. We had some pipes forty-eight inch that were solid sand.
And we have the same thing. We still have a sand problem and mulch.
It's a nightmare to clean that stuff.
Sand and mulch are the two things you're gonna find.
Yep.
So Bob, you make a good point. We need to add item E for stormwater under this community improvements and maintenance.
Yes, it does need stormwater.
And we'll, we'll add some items underneath that, like we have the base of four cleaning going on right now. I know L has been working on an RFP for a three-year for the rest of the system to make sure that it gets done too, over, over a set time period.
So you can, you have it on the creativity environment challenge. You have stormwater cleaning and maintenance.
Under what?
Number five, page five?
Creativity envi- okay. It, it could, it could go under that.
Well, I, I would have just bring that
Forward.
Forward to E.
Okay.
Which one?
Page five, item B, item, bring that to me.
Maintenance, yeah, that makes sense. Lighting, we've got the FPL conversion, and then the second phases of the FPL conversion. It's phased, but it's kind of its own standalone thing, the flo- the flop that we talked about.
Okay.
Flop.
And then Pelican lighting, again, that's on here. We need to, I guess we need to memorialize some of the Pelican items that are on here, that we have working.
Moving that, right? Those, those two to that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I'm assuming FPL hasn't gotten back to you with anything about Pelican lighting or anything?
Um, we've got a crunch-
I've heard nothing.
We, well, I know Ed Hedges has been working diligently on, on, looking at all of those.
And he's here with him.
Um, and then I know Laura's gotta work on crunching some numbers, and I don't know that historically we can determine how much we've paid for the main lights down Pelican Reserve Boulevard, but that's something we gotta work on.
Okay.
But, no, Eric has, Eric has not gotten back, because he's waiting on us.
The master proposal is still
Pending.
Coming forward.
Correct, correct.
Back to that lighting. Especially in the communities where they're redoing the lighting, like in ours. What's the deal, Tony? How are we handling FPL? Because right now, I think the lighting is referred to as dedicated to Gateway Services CDD. Do we have to change something and get approved by our board to get them in to work on those two streets? To change the lighting?
If we have a dedication to the district-
Can we transfer that?
It's an easement for lighting, and transfer to Gateway Greens, you mean, or to FPL?
To FPL. Because they're coming in and putting in all-new wiring, all-new conduit, and all-new lights.
They're doing it on our behalf, though. They're gonna own everything.
We don't have any ownership at all. They have it.
Right.
We, we need to look at that.
Yeah, either use agreement or some license agreement or some other-
Because if, if they're going to be moving out, and to avoid that getting stalled, we need to be able to get a, whatever document, legal document we need, we need to get that out of the way.
Typically, they'll have PUEs where they can put anything in a PUE, too. I'll double-check that, Ed. That's in Gateway, Gateway Greens?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, West Links Drive and Gateway Greens Drive.
Okay.
Okay, ready to facilities? Here.
Here.
All right, so facilities.
Yep, we're working through-
That's our alleged-
GIS, we're working through that. I think we're on year three of four. So we've had to shuffle and reprioritize some of that.
Well, all four of those items are kind of in the works right now, aren't they?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so.
Number one's been in the works for a long time.
We're getting there.
We're getting there.
Made a lot of headway. All right.
B, asset man, asset management.
I know number five was a huge topic of discussion at your strategic planning session, and we're continually looking for and identifying those opportunities.
That's come, you got two number fours.
I was just seeing if you would catch that.
Snappy comeback number three.
Number four.
Number four, oh. Five.
Well, I know what it is. It's supposed to be number fourteen, because we don't have a fourteen.
There you go, see? You caught me. The numbering, we'll rework.
We'll worry about the numbering later.
Okay.
Staffing? No feedback there? Okay.
Oh, Laura, thank you for the chart
Yes, yes, thank you.
You're welcome.